Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Wairika City Council meeting for December 2nd, 2025. It is 5:31 and the board, the council is meeting to go into closed session. Public comment, seeing as there are no members of the public present, I'll move forward. We're going to go into closed session this evening. We'll recess to discuss the following items. A, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.8. Property APN number is 014-421-310. The property negotiator is Matthew Bray, Director of Public Works, and the negotiating party is Judith Anderson. Item B is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.8. The property assessor's parcel number is 062-051-140. Property negotiator, Matthew Bray, Director of Public Works. Negotiating party is Siskiyou Central Credit Union. And item C is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. The name of the case is Shanda et al. versus the Wairika Police Department, Siskiyou County Case Number 25SC12001. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Wairika City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. And the city council went into closed session tonight and we came out of closed session at 6:08 PM with no reportable action. I would like to note that Councilmember McCoy recused himself from item B. And with that, I will ask Mr. Elsna, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Good evening. I pledge allegiance
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the role?
Good evening, Wairika City Council. Please let me know you are in attendance by saying aye. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Claire.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the council regarding the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
All right, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Claire, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, presentations. The first one that we have up tonight is recognition of service for Brian Morrison, who was a dispatcher for Wairika Police Department for 25 years. And Chief Gilman, come on down.
Hello, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, I bring in a buddy of mine who's retiring from the police department. Brian and I started right around the same time. He came in right after I had started. And he's done pretty much everything there. He started off as a part-time dispatcher and a reserve police officer and worked his way into full-time dispatch. We used to go hang out with him at the BP station when he was a part-timer. We've had a lot of adventures together. We've had a really good time. Brian's been a huge part of our department and a huge part of our families. You can tell by all the members back here that are here to support him. So we're really gonna miss B. It's hard to quantify who you help in law enforcement. And I was thinking about today is like, how do I say what, how good Brian has done as a dispatcher? How important is that? So I looked at our calls for service and divided them by the number of dispatchers over the years he's been here. Brian, you can honestly say that you've helped at least been the first person called, the sending officer to, over 50,000 people.
Wow.
Just think about that. Over 50,000 people were helped by calling and you answered the phone.
Did it?
Yeah, so very impressed by that. So in honor of Brian, we got him a nice plaque. It's got some stands and stuff over there for his years of service, and I want to thank him and happy travel.
Thank you, everyone. I'm just glad I got to serve this community. I hope I helped everybody's best I could. So, thank you very much.
Next up, we have a presentation from the Siskiyou County Library and Friends of the Wairika Library.
Hey. Hi, my name is Deborah Davis, and I am here tonight to let you know about our literacy program that is part of the we're housed in the library, Siskiyou County, the library here in Wairika. Everyone. Oh, the down button? I'm too tall? Okay. So our literacy program is funded through a grant from the state of California. It's not part of the library, but we are a grant from the state, and we have our program in Wairika. We also have it in other libraries in the county, too. So throughout the county, mostly Dunsborough, Mount Shasta, Fort Jones, and Wairika. Montague also. So first of all, I thought I'd let you know that 38% of Siskiyou County citizens read below 4th grade level. So that's our literacy rate. That's a statistic for you to know. And it is difficult for us to reach these people because they're either shy or embarrassed. But the library, housing it here in the library is a very safe place so that they can feel a little bit. It's one-on-one, and we have a little section of the library in the back. So I hope they can, we're hoping they can feel comfortable. And so here's, our program this year recently lost $20,000 from our state grant. So I'd like to say that we are now accepting donations to cover picture books for our Zero to Five Family Program. We have folders that we've given out to each one of you that gives you a lot more information. And also I have some other folders I can leave here. Someone told me I can leave them here somewhere, right here. Yeah, well, we have more, too. Okay. But if anybody else wanted to pick any, pick some up, that would be where I'll put them. And so also we need to say even our family, even our family program is targeted toward low-literate populations. So those are the ones that the funding is actually coming for. We have other people in our programs, but they're, we're not using the funds for the grant on them, but we do include all people. So for that family program. And that's about it. The adult, the adult program is the black and white one there. So we were looking for new students there, too. The tutors are, the tutoring is one-on-one, and we're always looking for tutors as well as learners. So if anybody's ever interested, we're receiving both learners and tutors. So does anyone have any questions?
I don't necessarily have a question for you, but I had the pleasure of visiting the library a few weeks ago. It was on a Wednesday and you had your playgroup and storytime.
Yes.
And I just want to say that all of those kids were very active, running around. They looked like they were having a great time, and I just appreciate that that is available to families. So thank you.
Oh, well, you're welcome. I mean, it's amazing how these little tiny kids, because mostly it's zero-to-three-year-olds now because the four- and five-year-olds are in school, TK and kindergarten. And so here are these babies, and they just, they've kind of created their own little place now. They all come and they're just wonderful. They sit down and they know which area they want to go to, and they cooperate. And First Five is wonderful. They bring the, all the activities, sensory boards and all these other things so that I don't have to do it anymore. I used to have to do it myself, but now we have these wonderful young ladies from First Five that come in and kind of help do the whole thing. It was great. It was nice to have you come and visit.
I need Mr. McCoy.
Debbie, could you just do a brief, I know you're talking about the playgroup, a brief synopsis of storytime on Wednesdays?
So storytime, like I said, is open to zero-to-five-year-olds. During the summer, or even during the winter, for homeschoolers or older siblings, we let them come in, too. So they, they come in, we do a story, and they all sit there and just listen. I mean, we have a little, you know, eight months old sitting there, and they all stare. It's amazing what they do, and they like to see each other, too, the little ones. So they would do that, and then we work into the activities. We go through the activities, and like I said, First Five is handling that part now. And then, before they leave, each child receives a free book for their home library. So that's a really nice, and then throughout the year, I used to do it monthly, but now I'm only doing it for different seasons. But we send out, I send out packages to people, to kids who are enrolled, families that are enrolled that live in outlying areas or may not be able to make it to the meetings, to the little activity, to the group, storytime. And so they, they, they all receive books, activities with explanations. Sometimes I send out, make sure they have certain materials. And the key is to have the parents use these instructions and activities to work with their children because that's what we're, we're focused on doing, is having the parents work with the child. So we do that. Now we only, I only do it quarterly because it's just gotten so expensive to mail every month, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? Now, Vicky Driver from the library is going to cover the, the library issues. This was the literacy program, so.
My name is Vicky Driver, and I am with the Friends of the Wairika Library. This is my about third career. I've always worked in healthcare, public health, and water agencies and things like that. So I know how focused you guys are on where does the money come from and how do you use it? Some of our money that we get from the state comes from the Institute of Museums and Library Sciences. And the Trump administration has essentially folded it. So that money went from the feds to the state libraries, and the state libraries spread it to the local libraries. And because we're a rural, low-income area, we, we were hit pretty hard. But, oh, by the way, I am speaking for Teresa Johnson tonight. She is the chief librarian of the county. She is taking care of an ill parent who is in hospice, who actually had a little rally today, so that's good. So I am speaking on her behalf. She, she and the two, only two other county employees manage the back, what we call the backbone of the whole 12 library system. And that is a huge amount of work. They do all the transfers, the holds, the purchasing, accessioning, all the reports and everything like that that has to be done, and it is a huge job. So we just, we, we, as the Friends of the Wai, pardon me, Wairika Library as sort of a tenant command with them, we try to take as much off of them as possible, but there's only so much we can do. So the rest of it will be speaking for both, both the libraries. If you look at this, this is, this was generated from a report that Teresa has to send to the state every year. And as you can see from these stats, which, well, you can't see, is we are really coming back from COVID. It, remember, a lot of the libraries were closed entirely. We were closed to the public, but we did holds, and as people could drive by, and we would throw their hold books out in plastic bags to them. So we actually managed to stay open somewhat. You can actually, with your library card, and if you don't have a library card, there's an application in there. And you can just walk right across the street and we will fix you up. You can check out and return to any of the libraries. Pardon me. And we, we are the co-host for a lot of the programs here. We have a summer reading program, and then we have some children's programs that happen about twice a month. And we also try to have some adult programs about on Saturdays about twice a month. Our number of people that we have walking into the library every day, I did a little bit of number crunching, which is what I do a lot, is, is up to about 120 people a day, which is really pretty good. And the number of kids coming into the literacy program is up to about 20. Now, this is 20 kids under the age of three or four, plus their parents. So we are not a quiet library. We're more like a community center, which some people hate, but we love it, and it brings a lot of people in. As we mentioned, we I need some water. I'm so sorry. We, thank you. We lost a lot of our funding, and we will be trying to make up for that with grants. And thank you, he got me some. In a past life, I was a grant grubber for water conservation. There are people in this state who still avoid me, who claim I have their, my hand in their pocket. That's, that's what I do. So I'm not bashful about asking. So we will be trying to make up those differences. We also will be seeking donations. We have, if you want to help, we just, as of today, put all of our book sale books on half price for the month of December. So you can knock out a lot of your shopping, and we also have our restored 1887 map of Siskiyou County in three different sizes. As you will notice from this, there, the whole, all the libraries in the county have 32 paid people and 92 volunteers. The Wairika Library is the only library that I know of where what we call the front of the house is run 100% by the volunteers. That's about 20 people. And I did a little bit of recalculating today, and that is equal to about $25,000 at $20 an hour every quarter. And that, you know, nobody's paying us. If the library's closed for holiday, we said, hey, nobody's paying us. We can stay open if we want to. And some other big changes that we have seen, our circulation is going up steadily, but we have a number of digital services available through Libby. You can download it. It's a free app. We have another one called Palace. That's another free app. And you can get digital books and audiobooks. I will warn you that the audiobooks are very addictive. Pre, yes. Oh, no, you can fold laundry, walk the dog, get that extra lap around the block, you know? Wait, wait, I gotta find out what happened. Yeah, got to walk a little bit more. My son and I missed an exit in New Orleans listening to audiobook. It was shortly after Katrina, and he says, Mom, this looks like Baghdad. You did. It was sad looking. The biggest change that we have seen since COVID, used to, our digital and audiobooks were about a third of our circulation. They are now two-thirds of our circulation. That is, that is quite an amazing change. Let's see, what else? I, we are now averaging about 120 people a day in the library. That, that is really coming up. The summer reading program, originally I thought it was 90 people. No, it was 190. They get rewards, prizes, free ice cream coupons, you know, they're very motivating. And our public events are fairly well-attended, depending upon what it is. The Friends also donate pretty heavily to First Five and to the sorority Sigma. Oh, gosh. I'm sorry. I forgot the name of it, but, I'm sorry, what is it? Sigma, yes, Sigma Beta Gamma, Sigma Gamma Beta. We'll get there. We donate pretty heavily to them. The state pays half of that, but half of that money has to come from local sources. And so we raise money for that. We raise money for scholarships for high school kids. We have a pretty active middle school participation. Every afternoon, they come in there. Some of them even study. But that, we just want you to know that we are more than just books. We, we are a community service. We have lots of activities. And they, thank you. That's, that's my cue to go. And we're not just old ladies begging for money, but we really are. If you also want to help, you, we are, our volunteers are aging out. They seem to retire at, I'm not kidding, 90. And really, the only reason they retire is because their kids pretty much make them, or sometimes because their husbands have become ill and they've had to, you know, step away from that. So you can always volunteer. You can donate, and you can purchase all the good things that we have at our bookstore, and you can just come in and browse.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, they have those in there. Oh, you do. I'm gonna leave things here. You volunteered. You have one for record. Thank you very much for having us. Thank you very much. I'll move on to a public comment. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comment concerns an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, and the podium adjusts up and down electronically to accommodate the speaker. Please address the council as a whole. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Do I have any public comment tonight?
Good evening, Jan Osborne, and I'm here with some expressions of gratitude. I would like to thank the city and the Wairika Elks Lodge, number 91980, for the delightful holiday parade on the 29th. It was delightful and beautiful. I'd also like to express my gratitude to the Wairika Police Department for the great job I think they're doing in keeping the illegal campers from downtown. I call when I see an illegal camp. And I haven't seen one on Minor Street for, I think, about a week now. I did see one on Center Street. I called on, I was doing on errands. I called and told the dispatcher I had finished my errand. I went back that way, and the camp was cleared. So thank you, Wairika Police Department, for the job that you're doing. And I'd also like to thank the city, and I think it's the Parks Department, that finally hired park hosts. We have two park hosts at Greenhorn, and they are doing a fantastic job. As one of the people who's walk every day at Greenhorn, I can, I'm speaking for a lot of people when I say they have, Paul and Barbara have our support. They're trying to get people to follow the rules, and things are looking up at Greenhorn Park. In conclusion, since we are at the beginning of the Advent season, I want to wish you all the blessings of the season. Hope, peace, joy, and love. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? If not, I will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The recommended action is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
Council Middleton, I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city, council, the city of Wairika as presented. I will second it.
I have a motion from Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Claire, to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing. It's the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Title sixteen of the Wairega Municipal Code in compliance with state accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And I will go through our public hearing protocol. The mayor will describe the purpose of the public hearing. City staff will provide the staff report. City staff will respond to questions from the city council. The mayor will open the public hearing. Public wanting to comment will come to the podium and provide the city clerk with their name and provide their comments. And then the mayor will close the public hearing and the city council will then deliberate and act on the item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and members of the council. This is Alia Roke Lesra, your planning manager. This is the first reading of a proposed update to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The California Department of Housing and Community Development periodically will review cities' accessory dwelling unit ordinances to make sure that they're in compliance with state law. So that is what HCD did to the city's ordinance and they responded to staff with feedback on how the ordinance should be modified to meet current state law. So staff took that feedback, incorporated it into the ordinance and included the revisions in attachment two, I believe, after the staff report. I'll briefly go over some of the changes that were made. In general, staff have already begun to implement many of these laws per state requirement. The purpose of updating the ordinance is just to have it be compliant with state law and have it in writing. So staff have made revisions to some definitions and clarified some definitions in the city's current ADU ordinance. Staff have removed some unnecessary permit requirements to ensure that accessory dwelling units are reviewed and improved through the ministerial or byright process. Staff have revised standards related to building placement for the ADUs, fire and life safety, parking requirements, and the number of ADUs permitted per lot, per the state, has increased. And the staff have made revisions to the zones that ADUs are permitted in. So this doesn't mean that new ADUs can be constructed on vacant land. It just means, for example, if there is an existing dwelling in, say, an industrial zone that has been grandfathered in for some reason, just a hypothetical situation, that because that's an existing dwelling, an accessory dwelling unit could be constructed because there is a house there. It doesn't mean that someone can come in and propose a new dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit in an industrial zone or zones where homes are currently not permitted. So that's just a clarification there. There's no direct fiscal impact by amending the city's municipal code. The, there's no environmental impact either. So I'll go to the recommended action. You have four steps here to open the public hearing, close the public hearing, motion to introduce and waive the full reading of the ordinance, and reading the ordinance by title only. With that, I will pass it to the city council for any questions for me.
Do any of the council members have questions? All right, thank you. So at this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and open it for public comment. Do I have any public comment?
Jan Osborne, I know that the city has to do this, but I'm going to express my opposition to this, all this ADU stuff. And especially when they are now increasing the number of units that can be on a lot. And the parking issue comes to me, to my mind. I drive down some residential streets in Wairega right now and there's parking on both sides of the street. People are parked. Some places have no parking on one side so that the street is wide enough for people to pass. But I am concerned that if people decide they're going to be putting in all these ADUs and J, the junior accessory dwelling units, that parking is going to be a problem. And our residential streets, and I'm thinking about my street, North Street, if any of my neighbors want to put these things in, there are going to be people parking on the street. It's already a hazardous place. So I know you can't do anything about it, but be prepared and whatever you can do to mitigate the parking issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other public comment? As there's no other public comment, I will close the public hearing and bring it back, this issue back to the city council for deliberation and action. Do I have any comments? Okay, with that, what are the wishes of the council?
I will make a motion to reduce and waive full reading of an ordinance to amend Title sixteen of the Wairega Municipal Code, updating the city's ADU ordinance to in compliance with state accessory dwelling unit ADU law.
This is Councilman McCoy. I will second Mr. Claire's motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Claire, seconded by Councilmember McCoy, to introduce and waive the full reading of an ordinance to amend Title sixteen of the Wairega Municipal Code, updating the city's ADU ordinance in compliance with state ADU law. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Councilmember Claire?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
We have an additional motion that's needed this evening, which is to read the following ordinance by title only. So I, I will make the motion that we read the following ordinance by title only. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wairega, California, amending Chapter sixteen point twelve point zero four five of the Wairega Municipal Code entitled Accessory Dwelling Unit and Chapter sixteen point four six point one seven zero, accessory dwelling units, and finding that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section one, five, three, seven, eight.
This is Councilwoman McCoy. I'll second Mayor Baker's motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember McCoy. And will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Claire? Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Hey. So the next item, item eleven, is city business. This is the city attorney. The agenda title is Discussion of Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance. And at this time, I'm going to recuse myself due to a potential economic interest. And I will turn the meeting over to our mayor pro tem. Name's Claire.
All right, we got you, Mr. Jared.
Good evening, Mr. Claire, members of the council. So this item comes to you tonight as a request from members of the public, ask the city council to consider a mobile home rent control ordinance. The council then directed our office to prepare such an ordinance and bring that back. So it is before you tonight for discussion in order to address some of the issues surrounding mobile home rent control ordinances and to allow staff additional time to incorporate those issues and to do some additional research as to the particulars of application of this to your mobile home parks. So as a clarifying matter, mobile home rent control ordinances do not, let me repeat that, they do not regulate the rent that either mobile home tenants who are renting a mobile home coach pay or the rent paid in apartment buildings or houses outside of mobile home parks. A mobile home rent control ordinance only covers the space rent that a park owner charges the coach owner for the privilege of having that portion of the park, the space, available to them alone. And so the, any member or any resident of a mobile home park who is renting a mobile home and is not the owner of the mobile home, this ordinance would not affect their rent. So I just want to make sure that that's a clear issue that's, that's laid out and understood. The, and so in the staff report, that's what's discussed, is what's called space rent. And so this rent stabilization ordinance would apply to parks within the city that are, that offered spaces for rent after nineteen ninety when the statewide mobile home law went into effect. At this point, we have not done, staff has not done the analysis to bring to you as to which, which parks would be applicable and to which spaces within those parks, number of spaces in each park would be applicable. And so when Ms. Lecay returns at the next meeting, that analysis would be presented by her. The, this ordinance that is presented as an attachment here is based off of the ordinance that we have managed and our firm has assisted with in both creating and amending it over the years with the city of Nevada. And so that is being presented as the, the form. And it is based on what many other cities in the state have, have done with rent stabilization. The in speaking with staff about this, they wanted to make it very clear that the impact on staff at this point is going to be significant. And they are unsure of the costs associated with that on your general fund. And it's undetermined that if the staff would actually have the time to set this up and manage the program. There is a hearing process associated with this if someone, a, a tenant at a mobile home park would have an action against their park owner for raising the rent. There's a process to appeal that rent, space rent increase that is managed by the city and city staff. It is not governed by city staff. Meaning it is, the city staff is not the hearing officer on something like that. There are certain dates that are highlighted in yellow in the attached staff report. Those need to be further researched as to both an effective date, once this, or if this were to be adopted. And then any of the clawback dates and dates in the past, dates in the future. We need to analyze that further to make effective dates and various other dates reflect what is allowed and what would be effective based on when this is passed. I guess the, the final thing to address here is there's often a big question as to code enforcement issues in mobile home parks. This ordinance does not address that at all. Under state law, cities can take over code enforcement in mobile home parks. But under state law, that is a duty of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the state agency. The state agency is designated as the body that does code enforcement. If there is a park that has particular issues, oftentimes residents within the city, the city itself, would like to see that one park cleaned up and would like to undertake code enforcement action against that one park. Under HCD's policy and under state law, what the city would need to do is take over code enforcement responsibilities for all of the parks in the city, not just that one. And so that's not on the table here at all, but I bring that up because that's often one of the comments that gets made. And one of the confusions that happens when we're talking about mobile home park space rent regulations, people often think that it's also relating to code enforcement issues. It's not. So with that, if there are any clarifying questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jared. I will just start to my right and work my way around and see if there's any questions or comments. Councilman McCoy? No? No? Corey? Councilman Davis?
Let me think about that.
Okay, go ahead.
I can understand the request because I have a friend that lives, I have a couple of friends that live in those mobile, Oak Ridge in particular. And they were concerned about the new ownership and, and the, the increase in the space, excuse me, the space rental. So, and I can understand where this comes from, but also there's another side to the coin. You know, I've always been a capitalist myself. Don Sporting gets from nineteen eighty-four to, to two thousand eighteen and making a profit is not a, is not a dirty word. So, and I can understand these people that purchase these mobile home parks where they want to make a profit. But again, you're dealing with, most of the time, fixed incomes. So because of that, I think we ought to look into this a little more. So that's the way I feel.
Okay, I will open this up for public comment at this time. So just please follow the rules set forth earlier as far as public comment goes. Okay, I will open this up for public comment at this time. So just please follow the rules set forth earlier as far as public comment goes.
My name is Judy Crawford. I'm a resident of Crystal Glen Mobile Park on Deer Creek Way in Wyreka. I just want to express our thanks for you looking into this. It's been something that's very close to the hearts of most of us in our park. And I could speak also for those at Oak Ridge. It it means a lot for us to know that you care. One of the things that I I just would like to reiterate is that this is not a Wyreka problem. This is a state problem, probably a national problem, but I know it as a state problem. Recently, I've been working with mobile home owners in Reading and supporting them in their efforts. They're in just the same spot we are with tremendous increases for and some of the the residents don't know what they're going to do with what's happening because of the fixed income. So and I I would like to just mention that those of us in Crystal Glen had our rent raised the first of November. So historically, we probably won't have it raised again until November first again. But it was mine particularly was raised over just a little over fifty dollars. And that that's a pretty big percentage. It's not just a two or three percent are the cost of living. It is substantial and we see nothing for it in our particular park. They do nothing for us. So it is profit for them and and we're very concerned. And again, we thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gypsy Delaluz and I'm a resident of Oak Ridge Mobile Home Park. And I just want to say pretty much the same thing Judy just did. I want to thank you all for taking this in and we hope that you'll help us out and have our back. It's many of us there live on a fixed income. And it's hard when the rent just keeps going up. We've been there twelve years. It's gone up every single year. And it's tough. It's tough in today's world where everything is higher. Our food, our gas, everything, as everyone knows. So whatever you can do to help us out, and I speak on behalf of most of the residents at Oak Ridge, not all, but most all. And I would just so appreciate it if this thing got passed and we got the help that we need to help our rent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have any other public comment regarding this matter? All right, I'm going to send it back to council as far as what our next action is. Says we're going to direct staff here to the future action of this item. So I'll just start with my right here.
Well, I appreciate what both Judy and Gypsy had to say. I have some questions. Probably I don't probably that the attorney might be able to answer it. As far as the, as far as doing a rent stabilization or rent control on a mobile home park, you alluded to the nineteen seventy, to some nineteen ninety legislation that parks that were built prior to nineteen ninety or were being operated. Does that mean they would not be subject to that legislation then in Wyreka?
Actually, just the opposite. It was the parks that are were open for rent prior to that time that would be subject to.
But parks that opened after nineteen ninety would not be subject to it then?
That's what we would need to look into, yes.
Okay, and I'm aware of rent stabilization in other cities. I know that when people particularly rent in a larger city where it is considerably more expensive to to rent where you're spending forty percent, sometimes fifty percent of your income to rent, that when they do rent stabilization, that it is not usually if if there are, if there's a, if there's a building, and this is not, again, this is not a mobile home park, Attorney Jared. But in a building, there will be a certain number or percentage of of dwellings that are rent stabilized and the others are not. This allows for the owner of the for the owner of the building to, as as Councilman Davis put it, to be a capitalist and make some money. Is is that something that will be included in a final bill like this so that there will be, there will be kind of a lottery like to have in other, in other areas? Or would that, would every single space be subject to rent control or rent stabilization?
So the ordinance as we're recommending it is as presented. And it makes it applicable to every space in the city that would be after, that would be after nineteen ninety. It's that analysis of what what spaces, what parks were offering spaces after the effective date of the state law. We need to do that analysis. But let's assume it's applicable to all parks. Then all spaces in those parks would potentially fall into the ordinance. When I say potentially, they would actually fall into the ordinance. But a a unit might be, a coach might be in a space that is owned by, the coach owned by the park owner and rented out to a resident directly. That rents to the resident directly would not be part of this ordinance. And you brought, you brought in the apartments and houses, those are not an issue in this ordinance either. And this ordinance does allow, as to the capitalist question, this ordinance does not lock in place the rent. It allows for a rent increase. It just doesn't allow for excessive increases. And so that needs to be tempered based on an annual basis.
An excessive increase is defined by the city of Wyreka, is that what you're saying?
The rent increases. Yes, let me get to that section.
No, I'm not trying to trip you up. I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying that that the the rent increase would be dictated by the city essentially.
Yeah, and the way that's being defined in the ordinance is there is a seventy-five percent of the CPI for the twelve month period. So if your CPI, oh, this effective in the area is four percent, then the rate percentage increase could be three percent.
And is there a reason why we use the CPI and not the CCI? Because I know that that they're both used to measure different, you know, different things and different, different raises, increases in things. So just, I'm, again, not a trick question. Is there a reason why we use one over the other?
I don't know of any reason of one over the other. When we say CPI, it usually, it's often used as a kind of a generic term to just mean a price increase, a cost, and your CCI, I'm assuming you're saying consumer cost index? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, because the federal government uses each of them and the state also sometimes will use each of them for different, for for raises in different things, different, different, whether it's, you know, looking at interest rates or, you know, I mean, as part of how they do rates. So, no, you answered my question.
Yeah, indeed. And to clarify that the the federal government, the Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics puts out, oh my God, dozens, probably hundreds of different parameters that you can choose from. So we would have to hone in on what it is. Now, the nearest metropolitan area that they, the federal government does produce statistics for, as I understand it, is San Francisco Bay Area. And so we'd be looking at that, utilizing that area. But again, those are details that we can look in a little bit more, perhaps. Looking to the north might be more appropriate for you. We we haven't gotten, those are the types of issues and questions we would want to own at this point.
And I realize we're not going to look at a city like San Diego, which is the highest, has the highest housing in the nation in twenty-four and twenty-five, and then New York, who is the second highest in twenty-four and twenty-five. They've far surpassed everybody else, but including San Francisco.
Well, again, for that reason, let us be clear here. The CPI increase would be whatever this year's number is, and then twelve months later, whatever the next number is, that difference is what the percentage increase would be. So we're not looking at the fact that San Diego has a sky high rent and then it's raised more on that. And then say, oh, then that high rent, no, it's the, it's that difference that then becomes the percentage rate. So that difference year on year could be the same in a low rent area, a medium rent area and a high rent area. It actually could be the same. And in fact, it could be that because of the high rent in, say, San Diego, and because of economic issues happening local to San Diego, you actually have stagnation or decrease even. And then in that situation, you you might be better off choosing one of those other areas. But point is, you don't get to choose the area you're calling from year after year. You would set that in your ordinance and usually it's set because of the area that you are located in or close by. And then you go with whatever that that inflationary increase is year after year.
Can confirm, thank you. I just want to, I want to, I want to clarify this again. Because of of, we have different types of residential parks for different types of dwellings. You use the word coach. Most of these people that I'm looking at in the audience right now that are either from Crystal Glen or from Oak Ridge probably don't live in coaches, but they live in modular homes. From what I can tell, I think almost everything in Crystal Glen is a modular. You're, when you say coach, you're actually referring, you're referring also to modular homes, correct?
Yeah, it would be to whatever whatever's in the space.
Okay.
So let me make sure I'm looking through the ordinance right now.
Because I'm going to have a follow up for you when we're done, just to clarify.
Yeah, so mobile home is defined as a structure designed for human habitation and for being moved on a street or highway. And maybe as this, that code section may be amended. So yeah, a modular home.
Okay.
A park model. But in general, that it's, you know, it it becomes termed as coach.
Thank you.
And that's, that is, that is not included in the ordinance. That's just a colloquial term that I'm using to get people to think that it isn't. To get people thinking about the the unit versus the space underneath. It's all, the rent increase here, we're talking, it's all about space.
Well, and I know there's a distinction in the United States between either a coach or an RV trailer and a mobile home. There's a certain distinction of square footage that that you can have in an RV. But we do have at least two parks here in Wyreka that contain, they may contain both a modular, i.e. a mobile home and what I would consider a coach or an RV trailer. And I mean, I mean, and we're talking, you know, a lot of RV trailers are forty, you know, you can get a nice one forty foot that has four slide outs. Are those, are those spaces also included in this bill? They're monthly space, they're spaces by the month.
Yeah, so in this ordinance, it would apply to spaces being rented out in a mobile home park. Mobile home is again, a structure designed for human habitation. We need to look into the applicability of an RV. We might need to make a change there. And might need to look into that a little bit more.
Well, again, and I'm going to go back. I'm not trying to, in a park where you have both mobile home slash trailer slash modulators, and then you also have coaches and RVs. Again, would, could we, would we need, I think we probably need to look at that same determination when we have over, because they're overlapping.
Yeah.
Because what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. You know, we should not, we should not be singling out and being prejudicial about someone because they live in a smaller home than we live in. You know, they're only maybe four hundred square feet and we live in an eight hundred square feet park mo- park model is what I'm saying.
Understood. And to answer your question, would the ordinance be applicable to that park? Yes, it would be, you're saying that there's three different types of units. Yes, the the ordinance would be applicable to the park. Whether we get down to the real granular and look at, well, would the ordinance be applicable to that space with this type of unit on it? We will need to look at that a little bit further.
Thank you.
And I understand, I understand your, what your intent is when you say it would be unfair to to be discriminatory against someone with a smaller unit. We might need to open this up, see if we can open it up, not just to a structure designed for human habitation, but define structure as also including a class B or class A travel trailer, RV unit, whatever those classes would be being rented, being in a park longer than overnight or something along those.
Well, I was going to say, or maybe if they signed a one-year lease with the park, that might be, could be a time. So, thank you. And then I want to go back to this nineteen ninety. I just want to be clear.
Certainly.
Because you mentioned it again, and can you, I'm not even going to try and say what you said. Can you explain again to all of us how the nineteen ninety affects parks that were built before nineteen ninety and parks that were built after nineteen ninety and the tenants in those parks? And that's my last question. So I'm going to turn off my mic. Thank you.
Yeah. Let me, I'm looking something up real quick. The applicability of that goes back to the mobile home park law, the state law that said that. And what it essentially means is that mobile home parks constructed in, actually, mobile home parks opened after nineteen ninety. That's, those spaces were not available prior to nineteen ninety. Then it, the the ordinance would not apply. So parks opened after nineteen ninety, the the ordinance would not apply.
All right, Councilman Middleton?
All right. Yes, to my understanding that Ms. Crawford, that got bespoke, so it would be Crystal Glen that would be exempt from that ordinance because because it was built after nineteen ninety, correct? Yes. Way after nineteen ninety, yeah. No, I was just clarifying that that park was built after nineteen ninety. I wasn't question answering. I was just making a clarification. Paul, thank you. It's my time. Back to my time. Where was I? I was verifying the date that, you know, some of the parks would not be. So we got to look into that when they were built. Some are newer, some are older. And then, yeah, I think Paul, Ms. McCoy hit the nail on the head is some of the RV parks have mobile manufactured homes or coaches in there that are permanent as well. So they're a mixed use. So I believe that's the Wyoka and the I believe that's the Waikia and the Rarica, um, I think they rent their little units out, but I'm not sure. So, yeah, there's definitely um, some more work I think we need to do on the whole ordinance to bring it back questions. And also the staff, well, it looks like with the staff, um, what the workload is gonna be and the cost on that, so, but um, yeah, that's my only comments and questions, I guess, is I think there's a little more research we need to do going forward.
Thank you. No problem. Councilman Davis, you're up.
I'm up.
You're up.
I thought I already was up. Um, this, I'm kind of uh, Mr. McCoy brought up a question that I'm still a little confused about. Um, we have a couple of parks that have mobile homes in them, they're permanent. Um, I had a friend that lived in one of them, but they also had uh, RVs, space rentals and trailer space rentals. So we'd be only regulating the ones that had the permanent uh, ha- uh, mobile homes on a foundation or permanently attached to the, the foundation or the ground. Or would we regulate all of those? And I know Mr. McCoy asked this, but I didn't quite get the answer through my thick skull.
Mr. Jared, could you help out with that?
Absolutely, the um, the, the manner in which the the mobile home, the unit sits there is not the issue. So whether it's still on wheels, whether it is on jacks, whether it is on a block foundation, a concrete foundation, does not matter. That's not the issue. What is the issue is what makes it a mobile home under the ordinance is the fact that it was constructed someplace else and trucked there in some way, um, and went um, on, uh, traveled on the highways to get to the park. It does not matter under the ordinance that um, this park has um, some uh, RVs, some um, coaches, some park models, some um, um, manufactured homes. That's not the issue of whether it would be applicable either to the entirety of the park or would be applicable to any one um, space on the park. Um, what is all, that issue is how that unit got there. Um, it does not matter also that the park holds itself out to be um, mobile home park somewhere in the title um, on the marquee at the front of the uh, entrance to the, the park. It doesn't matter um, what people call it. And the way it's defined is mobile home park shall mean any area of land within the city where two or more mobile home spaces are rented or held out to rent to accommodate mobile homes. And mobile home is defined as a structure designed for human habitation being moved on a street or highway. So we don't go with our, our normal understanding of things, we don't go with um, someone holding himself up, oh, no, we're not a mobile home park. We're um, you know, we're Sunny Glen, or whatever the name would be, and we don't even define ourselves as a thing, or we're an RV park. Well, if you're an RV park and you've got a mobile home in it, this ordinance applies.
Thank you.
It's a matter, though, of what is a mobile home, and that's where Councilmember McCoy's question, and we need to come up with a, a, a better answer on the applicability of your, the definition being proposed as it pertains to um, RVs, um, whether that would be applicable or not.
I can stand that, um, cause you know, we, my wife was a traveling nurse for a while, and we lived in a fifth wheel on trailer parks where she was working. But it was always a men- monthly rent that they charged, but they furnished our ser- our water and sewer hookups. So just like it would be if we were going on a weekend campout at an RV park, so to speak. So the, that would be different than one that is permanently on the ground that got there when they pulled it in with a semi or something such as that. Okay, one more question. I'm sorry. Um, the nineteen ninety date, does that mean it will change with the sale of the park? Or that nineteen ninety date only means it's the first uh, mobile home that hit the ground or was developed?
Yeah, I interpret that to mean um, when that park opened in any um, form. Um, it, it would not reset and um,
Okay.
the, the owner gets out of it because they sell it um, to their next shell corporation um, or a family member or something like that. Or if it were a legitimate, um, you know, if it was a legitimate sale and, you know, somewhere since nineteen ninety, and they just took the park over, now, that's, I don't believe that that's the way it appropriately works at all.
Thank you, Mr. Jared.
Certainly.
All right. Okay, it sounds like we have a little bit more homework to do on this, is it, we all agree on that, a little bit more question and answer kinda stuff that needs to be done. I try to take notes on what everybody wanted as far as direction, so if I miss some, you wouldn't mind just for the direction of staff to make sure we get it clear. Um, I have, at least for some of the issues we need to follow up on are the, the staffing issues as far as workload. And then, and stop me if I get, if I'm missing anything, John, okay? Uh, the cost amount, how this could affect us. And we also are gonna have to get an analysis of the spaces and parks at which these would apply to. Does that sound pretty fair so far? Um, next thing also, um, Councilman McCoy, if I got any of yours wrong, please uh, clarify for me. Um, one thing is making sure the fairness of the structure within the space is located as far as RV um, camper shell or camper or whatever, make sure we have a fairness that's based off what is actually parked there, is that correct? Um, confirm, also Andrew Jarrett, we have to confirm the dates that are highlighted in yellow within the ordinance that is wrote up. I believe that was one of the things we have to address.
Yes.
And I know I'm missing something there, I tried to get as much as I could, yes, please, Councilman McCoy.
One of the questions that I posed and that I'd like to see included in there is that um, uh, when, wha- what, what is that? Not every single space be included in rent control? That it needs to be somehow a metered set of spaces or that sort of thing, and then you would end up having, I mean, I, and then I guess in the, the, I don't know how the state of California does it, but you'd end up having a lottery or whatever for, for people, just, which is what they do in other cities. I know for, for, but for rent subsidized, rent control and rent, um, you know, those type of, those type of dwellings, thank you.
Is that, Mr. Jared?
Yeah, I remember you um, stating that in, in part of a larger question context, um. Is it, so if I'm understanding what you want to, is this something you want discussed? Or it's something you want um, included, that there be a, a way? What I'm not understanding from, I guess, from your question or statement is the lottery or what?
I wanna str- I wanna tr- a structured schedule so that if you have a hundred spaces in a park, not all hundred are under the rent control or uh, that they're not under the rent control ordinance, that you have a certain percentage or number. Typically, it'd be a percentage that would be established, that would fall under that, and then the other spaces would not fall under that.
Okay, I've never heard of, of something like that, but I can look into it, certainly.
Very typical, very typical in apartments and condos and flats and things like that. Again, it's probably not typical in, in tril- in, in parks, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it's very typical in the United States, you'll find it in, in uh, almost every major city. Uh, you know, now granted, we're not a city, we're not a major city, we're not a hundred thousand people. But um, that, I mean, I mean, part of what I brought up was when Mr. Dick, Councilman Davis brought up that, you know, he's a capitalist. I think all of us probably in this room are capitalists. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're like John Lennon, John Lennon said he was a socialist, but he said it was very easy to be a socialist with as much money as he had uh, in his bank account. But um, I, I think that it behooves us to look at both sides to be able to help people, but I'm uh, but I mean, we also are not in the business of telling a tenant, not a tenant, we're not in the business of telling a landlord what they can, you know, everything that they're gonna charge, I guess is what I'm saying. So that's why I think, I, I, I don't know how you do it, whether you, I don't know how you come up with the, with the composition of, of rent control versus non-rent control. I don't know how you come up with the uh, composition of um, I mean, I mean, uh, you know, uh, whether it's a percentage or what, but I think it's worth looking at. I think we need to look at it.
Okay, so it'd be along the lines of um, no less than uh, forty, no, no less than seventy-five percent of the spaces within any park shall be, uh, of a park with over a hundred spaces shall be held out um, for um, rent control.
Yeah, no less than seventy-five, no less than fifty, no less than twenty, whatever, whatever percentage is, it's, it is that we decide, but we, but that, that we, you know, cause we're the ones putting it into the ordinance, but we need to be fair with the other, with the other parks in,
Right.
you know, Waireka. Because, you know, as I said, I, I, as I was counting, we actually have three that are kinda, what we would say are mixed use. North Inna Town, Nichols, and Waika. Those are the three, and then we have several more. We've had one, one small one close in the last year, but we have several more that are just full on, where people have very, very um, you know, nice uh, big double and single wide, you know, what I would consider very luxury, they're nice homes. You know, they've, they've spent a lot of money on them, so I, I, I think that we need to, at, at some point in time, come up with maybe just a percentage. Cause if you only have forty spaces, you know, how many spaces can you, you know, what's the percentage of spaces that you, that the city can consider rent control? And, and, you know.
All right, um, I, I could look into that to see if there are other cities that have done it, and if not, um, see what it would take to make you the first.
Thank you very much, sir.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Um, Councilmember Claire.
Yes.
Can I have just a little bit of clarification for minutes wise, as you guys are wanting a lot of uh, research done for at, just at least maybe a timeline of when you want this to maybe come back next year sometime, or?
I was actually just gonna go to that next.
Oh, sorry.
No, no worries. Um, I wanted to work with the council and the staff to kinda come up with a realistic timeline at which we could ma- just get at least an update, I think, for this. I know that's kind of, there's a lot in the holidays, and I know staff has a lot going on. So what can we come up to as a collective here as far as maybe a, a timeframe as far as having this brought back? Like I said, maybe not for full, everything's answered, but at least some of this list is chipped off, so we have some answers and check the boxes, would? Charles now?
I think sometime, I'd have, I need, really need to check with my staff to fully understand, um. You know, with these type of questions, I would, I would hope in Q1, um, we, we would be able to get some answer, we'd be able to answer these questions, does that sound fair, Mr. Jared, between working with staff and you?
Yeah, that would be my estimate as well.
Could, could we look at maybe first or second weekend in February, cause I still am gonna, February, yes. Cause I'm still, I, we, we, we've got, we've got-
I'm sorry, um, just going off of the twenty twenty-six calendar that was already approved. Um, we technically have the next meeting, one meeting in January, one meeting in February, both are filling up quite quickly. I would suggest at least the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April.
I can live with that, I'm just saying, because we also, we're, we have, we got him working on a project that we want done by August first. We've got a fire hall that we're working on, which I think the people right now, that's, that's a priority, we've got uh, we're hiring three more firemen, which doesn't, which has taken us, taken us six months just to get the first three on because of the onboarding process. Um, we, we need to look at the homeless process, cause we're getting over, you know, and that's something I've asked, and I'm, I'm not upset about, but it's something that we have put off for three meetings. So we've, and plus there, they got, we've got the water project, we've got, I don't know, how many, how many, you know, it's not a hundred million like we did two years ago, we've got fifty, sixty million dollars in projects going, so. It's not, we don't wanna put on a back burner, but it, when we do it, we wanna make sure that we do it correctly the first time, cause we don't wanna take uh, uh, we're a litigious society. We don't need to take litigation because we didn't cross our eyes and, you know, or dot our i's and cross our t's, sir.
April.
I, I agree with that, we need to make sure we do this correctly, for sure, before we just go off and do it. So um, I am fine with uh, the last meeting in March or the first meeting in April, whatever works best for the staff, Mr. Jared. And Madam Clerk, whatever works, you'd think last meeting in March, first meeting in April. Therefore, that is what it'll be, how about that? First meeting of April, we will have, uh, come back to this for an update and see what we've got answered and go from there, does that sound good?
It's not April Fool's, is it?
No, first meeting in April, I don't think it falls on April first. Okay, that concludes city business, we'll get Mayor Baker back in to finish up.
Mr. Jared, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Chief.
What's the name of that park that's up there by the truck stop?
They, they have some buildings as well as- Yeah, they got some of the buildings.
I think it's my regular RV park, isn't it?
As well as mobile space.
Yeah. I think it's my regular RV park.
Mayor Baker, were you standing by the door, or did you go inside?
Oh, I s- I waited outside.
Oh, that girl.
Yeah, right.
All right, so.
My bad.
We um, are moving on to the city manager um, staff reports.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So I have a couple of updates for tonight, um, good news, escrow closed on the fire hall, so we now own the properties on Main Street. I really look forward to phase two of the project, demolishing the building, looking for a funding source, so that's really good for Waireka. We'll get some signage up as soon as we can, um, and then really this is all possible by measure V, so thank you, really appreciate that from the community. We have three paid firefighters, um, as of today, it's really nice to see the uh, engine go by with um, uh, staff on it. And the volunteers are an essential piece to the fire department as well, I wanna thank them as well. Um, but three full-time positions. Um, I wanna say special thanks to the finance director, Emily Aldrich, and her team for spending all last week with the auditors uh, for the annual finance audit, that's really important for the city. With reporting, with our uh, risk pool and for insurance, with getting grants. Uh, moving forward, we have a police recruit that's gonna start the December, December fifteenth, Police Academy at C O S. I uh, received notification this week, we're not only at ninety percent construction design for the fire hall, we're at ninety percent construction design for ringy pool. So those will be submitted before the end of this year so that they fall within this year's building code, if I'm understanding that correctly. Approval from the CCC uh, to start a vegetation management project at Greenhorn, including brush removal, tree thinning, chipping, prep for burning, Sarah Choffey's done an excellent job on this, as we continue to um, do those kinda projects at Greenhorn. Uh, and then she'll be working on an emergency operations plan to be updated for next year, which is an essential resource if we have a fire, we have a flood, we have some type of emergency in the city for response guide. And then additionally, on the city manager update, I wanted to notify the council and the public, um, I wanna give a current update on my interim position. Over the last eight months, it's been an absolute pleasure to work for the city of Waireka. I greatly appreciate the council giving me the opportunity uh, to work for the city as well as a chance to grow professionally. I've been very fortunate to have supportive staff, supportive council, that's been able to continue to drive Waireka in a positive direction. I believe the city is really fortunate to have the staff we have. Um, I really enjoy working with them on a daily basis, and that includes city hall staff, public work- Um, I really enjoy working with them on a daily basis, and that includes city hall staff, public works, police department and the fire department. There's also been a handful of community members and stakeholders in the community that I've thoroughly enjoyed with. Just want to name a few, Rick Evans, Ken Barnes, Ryan Horvath, Don Marie, Autry. That said, with nine years of HR in my back pocket, I believe it's in my best interest and for the best interest of my family. To go back to the human resource career ladder um, and focus on my family. I look forward to assisting the city council with finding the next permanent CM, and I plan to absolutely to stay and. Hopefully finish my career with the city of Wai Rika. So I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity, and. I look forward to continuing the interim role until we have a full-time replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elsnab, and uh, I um, will speak on behalf of the entire council, if I may. Um, we certainly have appreciated the work that you've done for us, and we understand. The choice that you have made and we admire you for that, so. We're very um, happy that you are continuing um, in the interim position. And I just want to thank you. I know that you're reaching out to recruitment firms um, as we speak. Um, to um, guide us in our next steps in this process.
Thank you.
So thank you. All right, um, do we have any other uh, staff reports tonight?
I think, I think that concludes our staff reports for the night.
Okay, so I'll move on to the mayor council member reports, statements and requests. Mr. Davis, I'll start with you this evening.
Well, the fire safe council doesn't meet until next, next Tuesday. But I, I want to thank Mr. Claire for a wonderful job of the pro cam job. Our, our section of the meeting was very concise, very good, well-run. Thank you, Mr. Claire.
Um, Councilmember McCoy?
I just want to thank John for shepherding in the escrow and getting that done, so we can go to the next phase of tearing down the building. So we put in the new fire hall in the, in the old Safeway area and the old doctor. Trying to think, the, the CCC's and Dr. Herfenall's old office, so, yeah. Um. The parade, yeah, I, I, somebody else is going to hit the parade, but it was fabulous. But um, we have Night of Lights coming up too, and that's always a wonderful thing, and it's great for kids, and so um, you know, encourage, want to encourage people to get out for Night of Lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Just real quick, yeah, I, I attended the parade. It was uh, great. Um, and uh. I want to say thank you uh, for uh, having the um, city crews at the old schoolhouse. I did see them up there doing some work and getting it secured. So thank you for, and for them for getting that uh, done up there by the lower Greenhorn. Uh, tomorrow is the C O C, so next meeting, uh, I'll have the report. Um, that does it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Claire?
I want to say I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. Um, John, thank you again for all your work. You've done a great job. And appreciate your input as we move forward with this and how we're going to go, so thank you. Wanted to thank Brian again for his years of service. For Y P D, it's going to be some big shoes to fill as being dispatching is a difficult job. And getting people that are good at it is hard, and people to stick around doing it's very hard, so. Appreciate everything he's done, and yep, uh, hope to see everybody out, Night of Lights, and that's it. Have a good night.
Uh, thank you. So um, I would like to remind everybody that today is Giving Tuesday. And you can give to your favorite organizations online until midnight. Well, and actually beyond. Um, and uh. Mentioned that um, Saturday night is the Night of Lights and um. That um, is always a great um, family fun time, so I hope to see you all there. Um, in addition to that, I'd just like to say a big shout out and thank you to um, our city crews. That go above and beyond um, with the setup and the take down um, for any of the activities that close minor street. So thank you, Public Works, thank you, P D. I know that you guys put in extra time and hours as well. Um, so um, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn at the meeting. Thank you.